Part of the disclaimer. Um, I'm gonna chant for about four to five minutes at the beginning as we did last time. Um, it just helped my energy as well to lift me higher. And then we'll get, we'll get, we'll get going. So actually, let's just go straight into chanting if that's okay with all of you. Six past, I'm, I'm gonna chant till ten past seven on my MacBook, so about four minutes. Let's do this. Also, just to let you also know, I don't have any backup today. Chris is, um, away today. So I might like be a bit glitchy as I'm, and I don't have any soccer or lilac. I don't have any, um, help. So yeah, let's do this. Four minutes. Nam Yo Ho Reng Ei Kyo. Nam Yo Ho Reng Ei Kyo. Nam Yo Ho Reng Ei Kyo.
The empathetic regard for the other person. With its locally based systems of districts, the S G I is well placed to develop connections centred on discussion meetings in members' homes. Personal support derives from home visits and a philosophy which holds respect for the individual was central. Furthermore, chanting in and of itself is connecting and outwardly directed, lending itself to communal practice. Robin Dunbar, the acclaimed evolutionary psychologist from Oxford University, identifies three cultural adaptations which he proposes were developed in early humans to strengthen bonds of friendship and cooperation, and put our ancestors at an advantage for survival. They were laughing, chanting or singing, and the advent of language enabling communication and the bonding of groups of people. There is a substantial body of research on the power of positive and supportive networks. For example, in two thousand and nine, Nicholas Chris of Harvard Medical School found that someone's chance of being happy increases the better connected to happy people. But this sense of happiness or wellbeing is of itself powerfully derived, not from individual pleasure, but from altruism, the care of others. The father of positive psychology, Martin Selgman, had stated kindness produces the single most reliable momental increase in wellbeing of any exercise we have tested. Happiness is the byproduct, but compassion is the focus. Based on research by Robert Sampson from Harvard, he has been shown that the strength of social connections and the level of compassion and concern for others are crucial in determining how communities work effectively and how they deal with monumentous challenges. A response to a crisis. One example of what has been termed the neighbourhood effect in action and how S G I as a community stood up to a major crisis is the communal response to the Great East Japan earthquake and tsunami of March the eleventh, two thousand and eleven. My wife comes from Sendai in the Tokyo region, which was particularly badly hit by the tsunami. I had made, I had, I have had the opportunity to visit a number of times the area where the human tragedy unfolded. Nearly sixteen thousand people lost their lives and thousands more lost everything, their homes, their livelihoods and their loved ones. A year after the disaster, standing on a road bridge overlooking the outlines of where homes and businesses once had been was a deeply moving experience. The force of the wave that destroyed everything in its path was clear. Only the foundation remained and a few larger buildings, a school and a shell of a factory. Colourful carp shaped banners fluttering beside it, symbols of hope in the devastation. Even more emotive, however, was attending a local discussion meeting further north where the tsunami had not hit. But displaced members were taken up temporary residence. One elderly couple related how they had been at home when one of their grandchildren's toys inexplicably began making a noise. Going upstairs to turn it off, the wife of the couple saw the great surge of the tsunami bearing down towards the house. Calling her husband upstairs, they survived but would have certainly died if they had remained on the ground floor. Now that they were uprooted and had lost nearly everything, it was the Gakai and their faith that was sustaining them. Beyond individual stories of hope, the collective response of S G I as a movement was second only to governmental support for the relief effort after the disaster. Forty-two Soke Gakai centres offered approximately five hundred thousand, sorry, five thousand people temporary shelter and sustenance. Six hundred forty-one thousand seven hundred items such as clothing, food stuff and equipment were delivered through the Soke Gakai networks. Five hundred and fifty million yen were donated to relief funds in the name of the Soke Gakai and two point two three million were donated from S G I oversea organisations. Around seventeen thousand volunteers, in addition to Soke Gakai staff, supported operational and logistic operations. Local members offered their homes to accommodate the dispelled and to provide relay points. As an integral part of the local community, Soke Gakai volunteers were at times able to provide relief support in advance of Japan's self-defence force such as Kezanumna. Local community members could also offer emotional support and ensure the continual safety of local residents, sharing information with a wider network. I visited the exhibition on the two thousand and eleven disaster at the new Tokyo Cultural Centre in two thousand and nineteen, rebuilt after the earthquake. It is now the grandest of Japan's Soke Gakai facilities out of Tokyo. The scale of the tragedy and the heartrending stories of the loss of loved ones was humbling. But the exhibition also illustrated most vividly the power of the human spirit to triumph with hope over despair in the direst of circumstances. Something that was clearly more difficult without the network of support the people had received. In a wider perspective, a wall of the exhibition displayed the countless messages of encouragement still being sent to this day by S G I members across the world. The most beautiful of which was a huge banner of an orange-hued rising phoenix, illustrated with numerous messages of support from the youth division of Los Angeles. Being part of something matters, being part of something can make a difference. Meaning as the source of happiness. Since the turn of the millennium, there has been an explosion in books related to wellbeing and happiness. However, author on psychology Emily Smith posits that their relentless focus on personal happiness has not resulted in any demonstrable improvement in the wellbeing of humanity as recorded in scientific observations. Instead, Smith suggests that in order to improve wellbeing, the focus should not be on happiness, a subjective term on which writers and thinkers have found it difficult to concur, but rather on meaning in people's lives and that the research points to meaning being the greatest of good mental health and overall wellbeing. In two thousand and ten, a study by the University of Ottawa and Rochester on college students asked the groups to either pursue activities related to personal happiness such as shopping, sleeping in and comfort eating or partake in activities associated with meaning such as studying, helping other people or thinking of one's values. The immediate effect was that those choosing personal happiness-related activities did not feel better, sorry, did feel better, but the mood boosts did not last and it was those who had made meaning the priority who felt better three months later. Feeling enriched and inspired with fewer reports of negative moods. Declining mental health and happiness levels in the West has gone hand in hand with a lowering of meaning in life as a priority for people. In the late nineteen sixties, the top priority for American college freshmen was developing a meaningful philosophy, eighty-six percent. By the two thousands, this had dropped back to forty percent and the top priority was instead being very well off financially. Research on happiness, meaning and suicide levels from the University of Virginia and Gallup, which studied a hundred forty thousand people across one hundred and thirty-two countries, found that wealthier countries did tend to score well on respondents reporting they were happy, but had dramatically higher suicide rates than poorer countries. When the researchers reanalyzed this data, they found a strong correlation between the lack of a sense of meaning in a country's population and their suicide rate. Countries with the lowest rate of meaning such as Japan had the highest suicide rate. Developed societies across the world have, in tandem with an individualist and acquisit mindset, try to free market capitalism, prioritise pleasure over meaning, what Aristotle described as hen- hen- hedon- hedonia. Hedonism describes, described as feeling good as opposed to edemonia, these words I'm not saying completely correctly, meaning being or doing good. One of the clearest summations of this mindset in my own country of England are the comical signs sold in every gift shop in the country. A huge number of which seem to focus on wine as the answer to life. You can't buy happiness, but you can buy wine and that's kind of the same thing. Is one popular example. This is of course all good and fun and there is nothing wrong with a bit of pleasure. But the issue comes from when meaning is relegated and pleasure becomes the centre of people's lives as shown in the research. Happiness without meaning, Roy Bamster says and his team from Florida University wrote, characterised, characterises a relatively shallow, self-absorbed or even selfish life in which things go well. Needs and desires are easily satisfied and difficult or taxing entanglements are avoided. The origins of this mindset may be an inherent part of human nature, going beyond Jeremy Bentham's altruism which described pain and pleasure as the defining human emotions or Aristotle's definition cited earlier. From a Buddhist perspective, this focus relates to the life state of rapture or heaven in the ten worlds, which constantly function in all humans. And yet this state finds credence and magnification on the dominant materialistic view of our times. In positing that matter is all there is and as discussed in chapter three, Steve Taylor of Leeds Beckett University proposed that the materialistic viewpoint easily leads to a world view that is bleak and barren in which having a good time and taking what we can from the world without concern for the consequences through consumerism and Hinduism seems to be the best option in life. The science is now proving that such an approach lasts longer than the hangover. Sorry, the science is now proving that such an approach lasts longer than the hangover the next morning in terms of its detriment to our wellbeing and that the true root to happiness, the true root to happiness lies in finding a meaningful life philosophy. What value you choose matters. Although meaning in life provides a long-lasting benefit, it is important to note that what kind of meaning one imbues one's life with matters a great deal. In our purist and democratic societies where freedom of thought and expression are enshrined in law, it is quite easy to regard all cultures of meaning or philosophy as equally valid. It is important to respect and listen to others' perspectives, but cultures of meaning can be destructive as well as productive. No one can deny that Islamic State had a strong culture of meaning. Its participants in terrorist suicide attacks most likely derived a great sense of wellbeing, purpose and camaraderie from the meaning they ascribe to their acts and yet in rejecting the dignity and equality of all human life, they have ascribed to a distortion of the Islamic faith which is pure evil. Inciting this extreme case, we can see the logic in Nitron's uncompromising stance against the government authorities and other schools of Buddhism of his day. Nitron evaluated the relative depth of major philosophies and religions at the time through his system of the five-fold comparison and the three proofs, which determined how different teachings explain the causality of life ultimately behind happiness and unhappiness. The three proofs of the validity. The three proofs of the validity of a teaching being documentary proof, theatrical proof and actual proof. The last of the three being the driving force behind the personal experiences of S G I members across the world. And you've know that all heard me say this online or on Instagram. In order to test Buddhism or spirituality, yeah, you can read books all day long, but if you're not experiencing actual proof in your life, if you're not experiencing the universe sinking together for your dreams and your prayers, if you're not experiencing the bliss and the glory of life and, and, and having kind of your prayers slowly answered, you're not practising a correct spirituality because it's definitely there for you to take. So yeah, this is supplemented by the study movement related to the first two proofs, which provides substantuality which provides substantiation to personal experiences. Nitron has been described as a firebrand and a confronting list by some historians, but the value of standing up for the most value-creating philosophy and the justification of his criticism of belief systems he saw as destructive and contributing to the social malice was brought home to me in my most recent trip to Japan. So he's now going to explain why Nitron was so strict and why Nitron denounced all other schools of Buddhism and like, you know. Nowadays, it would seem very strict and, you know, obviously as a Buddhist, we deeply respect other people and their, and their practice. But at the time, he was obviously understanding that he had to. Well, this, this example that we're going to read shows you how Buddhism has become totally corrupted. And if Nitron wasn't so strict, it would have, we wouldn't have had any hope. So anyway, a special temple in Japan. This is about Johnny's trip to a different form of Buddhism. Which Nitron would have denounced. Family friends had driven us to see a Tendai temple in Tojiji Prefect in central Japan. As the tradition in which Nitron had first trained in, I was particularly interested to have a look. Driving towards the temple, I was immediately struck by the opulence of the temple's roof, emblazoned with gold leaf and unlike many of the local temples I had come across. As we entered, a ceremony was taking place. A father and daughter knelt before an altar which contained a large fire. Three Tendai priests were performing a ritual to rid the couple of bad luck for the year. A sign at the entrance, sadly Shijoji had a similar sign, outlined the birth years that were particularly unlucky that year. A minimum fee for a basic exorcism of this kind was charged at five thousand yen, forty to fifty US dollars. No wonder the priests could afford to de-deck, bedeck their roost with gold. This temple was particularly noted for their lucrative ceremonies, but such operations are a normal part of Japanese Buddhist temple life. The passivity and superstition on the part of the participants in such an arrangement and the sheer contrast to the fundamental tenants of Buddhism brought home to me why Nitron and the three presidents had made their stand for a culture of meaning that focused on personal responsibility, equality and empowerment. So just like, yeah, there's an example of how in a different form of Buddhism, Tendai Buddhism, they were charging five thousand yen in order to basically have some kind of exorcism and they believe that if you was born in a certain year, you're going to have bad luck. So, you know, things that to us are very ridiculous, you know. But because of hundreds of years of people going down that route, people are, you know, still very much stuck in that mind state. So what is Kosen Rufu, something that I talk about all the time? In Nitron Buddhism, the concept of ultimate aspiration and meaning is the ideal of Kosen Rufu. The literal meaning of Kosen Rufu is to widely declare and Rufu to let flow in all directions. More than merely the propagation of a religious teaching, it has developed into its conceptualisation for S G I members over the years. In the early post-war years, it was more simply conceived by many members as a fixed time in the future when the majority of the world would practise Nitron Buddhism. However, in line with the broadening and liberalisation of the movement, Daisaku Akida describes in a far more fluid and all-incompassing terms. He states that Kosen Rufu is unending, not something that will end at some time and has no set form. Often defined as world peace, it more accurately summarises the active efforts of S G I members on an ongoing basis to awaken all people to the inherent and unlimited value and potential. Sharing the practice of Nitron Buddhism is still seen as the most noble and effective way to create a shift in the depth of people's lives and therefore bring a happy and more humane society. Furthermore, it now also means making the philosophy of respect for the dignity of life the foundation of society and that can be achieved by aligning with like-minded individuals of all faiths and none, as Akida has done in dialogues with world leaders, thinkers and intellects. In this sense, Kosen Rufu is not bound exclusively to the S G I or even Buddhism, but becomes a broad alliance to bring about peace, happiness and prosperity to humanity in the ongoing realities of conflict, division and hatred. The ideal of Kosen Rufu provides S G I members with the power of meaning in every activity they undertake. So that's how much we're going to study today. Anyone have any questions or wants me to unmute them? Do you want to say something? Let me know. So we've basically spoken about the S G I, the organisation that I'm a member in and a leader in and the importance of why we, we, we are together. I know I said this last week, but, you know, being with like-minded people and remember, I'm not talking specifically about you have to be in a Buddhist religion S G I, but being around like-minded people. I'm telling all of you, show me your five closest friends. I'll show you your future. I'm sure you will know that saying, right? Show me your five closest friends. I'll show you your future. If your five closest friends are just not relate, like not vibrating like you anymore, first of all, send them away with absolute love. Always hold space for them. It doesn't mean that you're above them. It doesn't mean that you're seeing the world better than them. It just means that you're no longer vibrating the same. Simple, yeah. Show me your friends, I'll show you your future. So in a slightly larger sense, being a member of the S G I, you know, obviously. I, my greatest, to be honest, for me personally, I'm speaking for myself, my greatest gem that I have, other than Michael Hanzun, is the connection I have with certain people that care for me in the S G I. They truly love my eternal spirit, like they, they protect me. Specifically for me, I deeply connect with the, all the members from the diaspora, you know, like the, I'm, I'm one of the original youth members of the African and Caribbean heritage group. So I've got like these black men that chant into the Gohanzen with their long dreads and they're like, they're giving me strict guidance, but they, they see the world exactly how I do, you know. And so if I can suggest anything to you, my brothers and sisters, is to slowly, just like, make sure that you're, you're, you're. You know, listen, if you've got like two friends and that's all, I'm promising you, you're more wealthy than ninety-nine percent of the entire world. There's so many people that have millions of followers on Instagram, get out of here, man. They can't even look me in the eyes when I speak, when I see them. You know, because they are shallow and they're empty and their whole life is on the phone, like their life is this. Yeah, they can't have a heart-to-heart expansive conversation. They can't feel that heart-to-heart energy. So if you've got one friend, like my best friend on the planet is my friend Chris, he's not here today. He's actually at the cinema watching James Bond, believe it or not, like catching all the other programming. But, so yeah, like, when I, just him, I don't need no one else. I promise you that. My connection with him is everything that I could have ever prayed for. Now I've got human friends and I've got spiritual friends. One of my closest friends in the world is Jose. And when I was homeless and stuff, he was like, he lived on my street and he was my brother. You know, but he's kind of gone on a slightly different path right now. He's, you know, he's got, he's about to be a father, you know, and he's got, he's, he's, he's engaged in stuff pretty much. So our lives have had to slightly go different paths, but like I'd take bullets for him. But like spiritual friends, like truly, like it blew me away when I met Chris and I suddenly realised I don't need no one else. I don't need to pretend to have loads of friends. I don't need to go around pretending I've got like, oh, I've got fifteen thousand followers. Look at me. I don't know none of them people. Trust me. You know what I mean? Like, so to have a strong friend, you know, I'd like to think that I'm your friend. Buddhism talks about this. Seek out good friends. Do not seek out bad friends. Bad friends being people that take you away from your true purpose. Bad friends that just want to get fucked up and get drunk all the time. Don't get me wrong. I love drinking. I love all of that. But like, make sure you're seeking highest vibrational friends, people that actually really care for you. Not just care for you because you can, you can help them out one day in the future, not, not just care for you because like, of just like, that's the way it's been. I'm talking about they fucking care for you, like, and they care for your eternal life. They're the kind of friends you need to be searching. And if you haven't got them kind of people around you, this is what you've got to do. Start being that person yourself. Be that person to other people. Be that person that people can lean on. Be that person that people can rely on, that people can trust. And you will start to vibrate differently and then very naturally you'll find that person coming to your life. And I'm telling you, as long as it's only one or two people, you will be good. You will be good. To search for a friend, and this is the thing. The reason I'm saying this is because to find, for me to find that reflection in Chris, I had to know who I was fully. Like I had to understand myself to understand who he was, to then understand who we are as friends. One of my favourite books is The Celestine Prophecy by James Redfield and he talks about how, this is more to do relationships, but he talks about how, yeah, I see someone pulling out the book. So yeah, James Redfield talks about how most people, when they get into relationships, there are half a sea and there's another half a sea and they're trying to find the other half to make like a circle. But that's the way the system has us twisted. We should be individually full circles. We're not trying, I'm already complete. You know the classic saying? Or, and this is what the music does, the Babylonian Western music in the twenty-first century, it's all designed, all the blues and stuff from like back in like the twentieth century is like, ah, my baby's gone, my baby's gone, I can't live without my baby. It's all, it's all designed to make you feel like you are not enough unless you've got your other half. It's all a plan. It's all a game. Same with the music nowadays, like, you know, like, I can't, I don't know who the artists are, like Little Mix or I don't even know, but it's always like, I need my man. I like, I can't live without my man. It's absolutely demonic and satanic and it's designed to take us away from the fact that we are all we need. And the more you get into your own relationship, the more you become a full circle, you will find another full circle coming to your life. And then what happens if you do want to make a relationship or something, you create a superhuman. Yeah, talks about this in Celestine Prophecy, doesn't it? That superhuman, yeah, we like, I ain't trying to find no other half. I'm not trying to find another half of my friendship. Chris does not complete me. I'm good without him, but I'm amazing with him. You know, and I know there's about four or five people on here alone that I've got that kind of connection with as well and like, with like, you know. It's so important. It's just so important that we, we seek out just good friends at this time, people that we can really rely on and like, make sure we got their number. Yeah, not Instagram friends. Look what happened like two days ago and Instagram went like, I had so many people like shit, where's Aaron gone? I was like, what? You could have just asked for my number, you know, like. I'm just going to read today's guidance from another book. It might be a little bit more Buddhisty, but let's go. This is for today and tomorrow, daily encouragement by Daisaku Akida. So Mister Toda, who's my favourite ever person, is the person that obviously died, uh, no, it's the person that came out of prison and started the Soke Gakai. Daisaku Akida's mentor. So Mister Toda once told me, you can make defeat the cause for victory. You can also make victory the cause for defeat. The Buddhism of Nitron Dashonin is the Buddhism of the true cause, the Buddhism of the present and the future. We don't dwell on the past. We are always challenging ourselves from the present towards the future. The whole future lies ahead of us. We have only just begun. Because we advance with this spirit, we will never be deadlocked. The whole future lies ahead of us. We have only just begun. I actually just want to show you quickly a photo of, how long? I've got ten minutes. Let me show you a photo of Jose Toda. I'm sure many of you know what he looks like, but I've never been more connected to a human that I've never met in my life. I mean, I wouldn't be here today thinking the way I do if it wasn't for him. Anyway, so yeah, let me share. So yeah, bad boy. Yeah, this is Jose Toda. He was twenty-seven. He was, yeah, man, the second president of the Soke Gakai. And these are the three presidents. So Tsuburui Makoguchi on the left, he's the person that basically created the Soke Gakai in nineteen thirty. He was a teacher and Jose Toda was nineteen when he met him. He was about forty. And then Jose Toda also became a teacher with Tsuburui Makoguchi in a, in a school in Japan and they basically never left each other's side till the day that Tsuburui died. And he was his educator. One of the strictest men you'll ever meet was Tsuburui Makoguchi. Jose Toda was also one of the strictest men you'll ever meet. And then Sensei on the right, much, much softer, but very strict at the same time. So yeah, President One, President Two, President Three, he's alive to this day. This is one of my favourite photos ever, ever, ever. Actually, this is one of my favourite photos ever as well. I basically had all of these photos as one of my background photos once, a major fan. But yeah, this is kind of what it would have looked like, the Soke Gakai in Japan. What we're doing right now, basically having just a discussion on Buddhism, this is what they did right here. So you can see it's kind of like all the people in the background and then they would sit there and Jose Toda would talk and give lectures. Oh, that's an amazing photo. I need to save that. So yeah, anyway, just wanted to show you a little bit about what the presidents look like because, just to give you some context. How do I stop sharing? Someone just said I needed to hear this today. Thank you. Wow. So anyway, yeah, I'm gonna, I think I will do that chant for like four minutes at the end again, if you want, just to end it and start it, but no questions either. Sit down, yeah? You're, you're, you're all lecturers on Buddhism now, yeah? You know the ting. Yeah, you know it, yeah? Say no more. So yeah, man, I guess the message of today, and it's always, it's always my message, man, just really work on just discovering who you really are authentically, like what is your real mission in this world now that the world is changing, like? Do you resonate with the way that the world is changing? Do you resonate with the news and the fear? Or do you resonate with a slightly different narrative and a slightly different truth? And if you've been invested in life up until two thousand and twenty before, like if you've got a lot of investments in a three-D life and you're sensing the transformation in your spirit and your, and your, and your purpose, have the courage, let's read that, let's read that guidance again. Have the courage to, to step into your true self. What was the date today? So it says here, if you summon your courage to challenge something, you'll never regret it. Yeah, you'll never regret it. Yeah, you might like, like me with the pine needle ting. Yeah, I'm sure you've all seen the pine needle ting. Yeah, listen. Yeah, I, I might go rent a house soon. Like, no, I'm joking. I'm definitely not doing that good. And I, and I don't expect for it to go on for, for many long, but like I could have overthought it. I could have had like, oh, I don't know if I've got the courage. I'm worried. It's all about action. Buddhism is about action, creating action. Obviously you've got, you don't, you don't want to overthink things. And listen, why would I overthink things when I'm chanting Nam Yo Horeng Ei Kyo, strong? Why would I overthink it? I can only see zero point zero four percent of the light spectrum. I can only hear zero point zero four percent of the audio spectrum. So I have to believe that if I, if I'm praying, something massive will happen. Something will be shift, something will shift. And so if I didn't have the courage, I would never have done it. In one week, in one week, I've been able to, well, I've been able to just buy my mum some food, which is something I've not been able to do for like two and a half years. You know what I mean? Off of my own effort. So it's, it's a big step for me. So let me read, let me read it again. If you summon your courage to challenge something, you'll never regret it. How sad it would be to spend your life wishing, if only I had a little more courage. Wherever the outcome, the important thing is to take a step forward on the path that you believe is right. There's no need to worry about what others may think. It's your life after all. Be true to yourself. You know, when I first started talking about the foraging, I had so many other men clearly just jealous of me saying, eh, man, how are you gonna, how are you gonna charge for that, man? You should just be giving it away for free. It takes me at least seven hours a day, seven hours a day to climb up a tree, to forage it, to clean it, to, to spend money on distilled water. That's my electric bill. To, to, to purchase everything, the stamps, that's money. People think I should just give that away for free? No. They're just annoyed that they didn't think of the idea themselves. Now imagine, imagine I was like, oh man, like what, all these people are making me nervous, like I shouldn't do this. Nah, man, you've got, you've got to run with your heart. And when, and this is another thing, yeah. What book did this come from? I can't remember. It may have been Think and Grow Rich by Napoleon Hill. When you get an idea, run with the ting. Run, like, don't stop, don't think about it. Look, I've, I've literally created a brand, packaged it, everything in one week. I didn't, listen, it'd be four in the morning. Four in the morning, I could be tipsy and something tells me go on to Vista Print and then print off stickers. I'll do it, even if it's only, I've only got twenty pound left to my name. It's telling me do it. Don't have no fear. Because I would have had fear, thinking, how am I going to go caf tomorrow? How am I going to eat tomorrow if I spend twenty pound on stickers right now? But it works and suddenly everyone's like, oh my god, these stickers are nice. Can I purchase it? That's how the universe works. Just don't block yourself. Do not step in your own way. Because you don't even, the ancestors are working hard to get ideas into this head right now, you know, past all the wifi and the five G, they're trying hard to get that frequency into me. Yeah, so when an idea comes, run with the ting and just try not to block yourself. Have no fear. My son sat next to me just said, failure is not the opposite of success, it's part of it. Yes, young king, yeah? You're, you're so right, lion. Failure, yeah, is, failure is actually part of success. A hundred percent, like I failed a thousand times until I became successful. And then I realised that every single one of them failures were part of my journey. So if anything, how can failure be bad? Surely failure is amazing if you've got the right perspective because then you know, okay, cool. It's like, who was it? Who was the person that invented the light bulb? I can't remember his name, but he said he failed ten thousand times. He failed ten thousand times before he created the light bulb and he said every single one of them ten thousand times that he failed was part of the mission of him creating the light bulb. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't have this light bulb here, right here. I wouldn't have that light bulb if it wasn't for failure. So I don't know your name, but you're a king and I can't believe at your age, you're that wise. But you must have a very powerful, beautiful mum. So anyway, I love you. I'm going to chant for just another four minutes and we'll keep it moving. Yeah, thank you always. Thank you always, as always, uh, JC, Naomi, Harley, the big sis. Shango, I hope I'm saying that right, Angelica, JM, Joy of course, Celeste, Muna, JD, the lion, Jules, Nat. Maria, Angelina. And Joanne, she's just reconnected, thank you for being here, I love you so much, man. And, um, yeah, we're, we're, we're really doing well, we're really doing well, let's do this. And I did this with my bracelet, the Vista Print thing, the business cards, the stickers, the materials a lot, so I hear you. Trust me, man, when an idea comes, run with the ting, because otherwise what happens is, yeah, your mind starts to get in the way. I could have think like, oh, I've only got a hundred pound, like, do I really want to spend forty pound on like packaging or do I really want to spend? Like thirty pound on something else, like nah, it's nah, nah, but then your mind starts telling you, yeah, you got these bills to come or what, you want, you've got to go see your friend next week, like save the money, no, man. Like just run with the ting and this is the thing, don't slander your life, have faith, have faith. What did I tell you last time? Jose Toda said this. When you have faith, it's like lying under the stars with your arms and legs spread out and everything you want appears in front of you and you can give it all away. And know that it will all keep coming back and you can keep on giving it away. When you have that understanding and perspective of the universe, everything changes. It doesn't mean we be silly and we just like, when money comes, we just chuck it away. You have got, you've got to use wisdom, but I promise you something like, something like that, the pine needle, for instance, is benevolent, it's actually helping people, I have no doubt. The universe will, will, will back that, hundred percent. And even like someday, like when Instagram went down and like, obviously I had no sales for that day, do I care? No. I was like, yo, the universe has got this plan for me, I'm in tune with the universe, so I ain't trying to be greedy, I'm not trying to hold on to all these clients, I don't care, one, I literally. I'd rather the people buying the pen for me never come back as a customer. Why? Because it means that I've implanted something in their mind to go forage for themselves. That's what Kosen Rifu is, that's what it means to really care for someone, I don't even know these people and I care for them more than their own friends, I promise you. I promise you, that's what it really means. Obviously, if, if someone wants to repurchase it from me again, I'll be there, but even on the card, I tell you how to do it. You know, this, there ain't no ego here, why? Cause what's meant for me is never gonna miss me, never gonna miss me, they think what's meant for me is never gonna miss me. And what's meant, uh, what's not meant for me will never reach me, never. So if I have that faith in myself and the universe, I ain't gonna slander my life by trying to fucking make these people come back as repeat customers. Oh, please, please, I want your money every month. Nah, bun that, man. I, I also am a king, I'm not really supposed to be up here for the next ten years, like in, in trees, like, you know, like, I want, like, I'm happy, it's, it makes me, it makes me happy. And I'm glad to be helping people, but it's just a part of my path right now, you know, I need some money to keep it moving. So, um, yeah, man, thank you. I love you all, it's been, I'm not gonna lie, the highlight was that little king though, blowing me away with that knowledge, come on, man, wow. Yo, the children nowadays, man, the picnic, their knowledge is insane, like the newborn babies, insane. Like they're coming straight from like the Palladis, I swear to God, they're incarnated differently, they see things differently. Why do you think Babylon trying to do their ting and man, and to try, try put poison in them from early, try turn off that light body, try turn off the aura, you know, whatever you, whatever you think, that's what's happening. Let's go, uh, I'm gonna do just, I'm gonna do just two minutes, I don't want to take your time, yeah? Let's do it. Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo. Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo, 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 Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo. Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Kyo. Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Kyo. Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Kyo. Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Kyo. Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo. And remember brothers and sisters, yeah, what we're saying, basically, when I'm chanting nam, meaning I devote myself to, I devote myself to the highest version and my highest potential. I devote myself to the best Buddhahood in the planet, into the universe, whatever you want to call it, the permanent, whatever, yeah, I devote myself to my highest version. Yeah, that's all I'm saying, don't try not to overthink this, remember, we only hear zero point zero four percent of the spectrum, try not to overthink and over contextualize it all. We are dev- devoting ourselves, we're not, we're not devoting ourselves to no external god, to no Jesus, to no Mohammed, to no Saibaba. To our highest version of ourself, the microcosm of the macrocosm. Cause if there is any external gods, best believe that all of us are the same, there's not a chance in hell, any of us are vibrating lower than an actual god. I promise you, I love you all, thank you so much for being here for an hour and two minutes. Um, yeah, man, and maybe next week I might have my neck tattoo, who knows? I have to wait either this week or next week, it's gonna happen either this week or the week after, so I'm trying to transform, baby. Um, I'm stepping into myself and no one's telling me I can't be who I want to be anymore, no one, and I hope it's the same for all of you, I hope it is. I love you, Nam Yo Horeng E Kyo, stay happy, stay blessed, muah, you're right, Joe, let me kiss you all and, um. Take care, guys, I love you.